Tony Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, which is hands.
Let the record reflect that all members are present here this evening. Which members should have received the draft minutes of January 27, 2025? Is there any corrections or comments on those minutes? Make your question, yes.
Yes, on the January 27th, down at the bottom, under Granite Ridge, I would like to have it reflect what we said at the meeting. Twenty-eight foot of blacktop. Just, there's no misunderstanding that might include the curb.
Yes, very good. Carrie, are you by chance, sir, looking at my report?
Yes.
Is that title of the report?
No, he's looking at the draft minutes, I believe.
Talking about the minutes.
Draft minutes. Your report.
Well, I think...
Okay, well, I can clear this up really quick.
Okay, sure.
So, the, so, on my report is last thing's done at the sites. So, Granite Ridge, that's from over a year ago. We talked about twenty-foot minimum width. We got smarter later and said, you know, we counted the curb. So, that's what makes sure that what you, what's in your left hand is the, is the my zoning report. That is the zoning report, correct?
Okay.
That's the meeting minutes.
Planning minutes.
Meeting minutes from last month.
Yes.
In the, in the section under where it says, "Update on active subdivisions."
Next to the very last paragraph.
Okay, all right, that's the carrier. It said that for over a year, but okay. So, what would you like for it to say?
I'd like to say that's blacktop. That's not including the curb.
That, GM, is not an action item.
Right.
On this. It is a historical, it's a, my way of monumenting what was, was said. So, be glad to meet you guys in my office individually. We can hear that report. I did go back and look at that. Because when we, when we had the epiphany a year later, about, or six months later, about twenty-eight foot was, was, I think, your, your ask. Yep. We all agreed to that, but is it twenty-eight feet with the curb or without the curb? And now, histrionics, it's going to be a little hard to rewrite what we said. So, we had, we had to look at that.
And then we'll have a chance again to clarify that preliminary, when we get to preliminary site plans.
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, you know, right.
Basically, no reason to make any changes to the minutes, draft minutes.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, there's no reason to make a change to the minutes because this refers to what was, what's been referred to before.
Right.
So, but I, like you said, if you, if you, if, if that, we want to bring that back and, and make sure of what that says, we can always discuss that when the plans come to us.
Okay.
Then, did you make a motion, did you make a motion to?
I did not.
You did not, okay.
I will. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
Bill seconded. Further discussion? Those in favors of accepting the draft minutes of January 27, 2025? Singify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items. First item this evening is Kelly Hess, Board of Zoning Appeal, case 2025-230. Home occupants daycare special exception. Daryl, you want to start us off with that?
Sure.
Representative here, they can come forward.
Kelly? So, Ms. Hess lives at 27 Fairview Avenue. That district is our 6,000. Home occupancy daycare are allowed in, in that zone by way of a Board of Zoning Appeals approval. This board can, can make a recommendation or not for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Totally up to you. But Kelly's going to give her presentation as to what she has. There's a couple of things I just want to outline from the state of Maryland on home occupancy daycare. Ms. Hess is allowed to have up to, if that's what your coordinator agrees with, up to eight children. Not include children in the home already, under the age of six, would count towards that eight. So, keep that in mind. The state of Maryland does not require fences. I know we have historically wanted fences, and it's not a bad idea. But I'm not sure what your fence situation is. We can discuss that in a minute. But state of Maryland only, they, they may look at it and say, okay, there's a, there's a river there, we want a fence. There's a pool there, we want a fence. Or something dangerous, that type of thing. So, other than that, Ms. Hess, please.
Get your name and address, please.
My name is Kelly Hess. My home address is 27 Fairview Avenue, Tony Town, Maryland. I'm here before you guys today in hopes that you will reconsider the zoning special exception. I am looking to open an in-home daycare from there. My passion is children. I love children, I love them, I love watching them grow and learn and just become their own little person. I do have a nephew, he will be two years old. Watching my sister go through the process of trying to find a daycare, just so that they could... A lot of the centers, they have a long wait list, or they're very expensive for families, for families to afford them. Luckily enough, she was able to find an in-home daycare with an empty spot available. And the charge that they were running was in their realm of, in their budget. I hope to also be one of those who can fit in their budgets, just to help their families out, to help them make a living for their families and get to enjoy life, really. So, here I have the outline of the property. The daycare would be only in the 27 side, as the house is a duplex. I do have a backyard. I don't have a fence up. However, we don't have a pool or anything in the backyard. I do just have like a swing set and stuff for children to play on. The next page shows you kind of a map of the area. And shows you the roadways that are by the house. The 27 side, and then there is grass behind that. Out front, I do have a porch that has a roof over it. And we do have a sidewalk. And for pickup and drop-off would be the front door. I know parking is sometimes a challenge on that street. But I know once people go to work early in the morning, the parents will be able to park there safely to bring their kids in. And same in the afternoon, they'll be able to, you know, park safely to pick their children up. I do have my emergency escape plan here. So, in the front of the building, there is the door, the front door, and then in the back, I have a back door. And in the whole downstairs, I have three windows that all can lead to the outside. I do plan on getting an escape ladder, just in case there would be any possibility that we would need to do that or to use that. I would have that readily available. My plan is, if we can make it out the backside safely, to take them down by the garage in which the landlord owns, gather them there, take roll call, do all that. If we are unable to evacuate the back unsafely, go out front and go to the pool. That would be safe for the children, for their parents to come pick them up.
I hear you say, the landlord, you do not own this property?
I don't. My dad does. We rent from my dad.
What does the town need from the owner? Or would that go to the Board of Appeals, that document?
Kelly, have you gotten anything from the state as far as your, your, the numbers of the children they would approve or anything?
So, I haven't discussed with them the six versus the eight amount of children. Page four of the packet, I do have him where he signed off on that it is okay for me to run the daycare out of the 27 side.
Yeah, that's what I was looking. What he's looking for us is on zoning.
So, it is allowed in that district. The number of children will be set by the, in agreement between you and the state. You know, we can, we can talk about other things, but the zoning, it does, it does fill the requirement for the special exception. You know, the, there's also parking in the rear that could be used. Is that, in the case this becomes a problem?
Yeah, so we do have parking behind the garage. There's a little patio area that parents could park. And we do have a full sidewalk coming from the parking area up to the back of the house and up to the porch.
Kelly, will you have anyone working with you, or are you going to be by yourself? What's your arrangement?
It'll be by myself. I'll be the main caregiver. I do have backups in case I were need.
But you're not, now you're going to have employees that were worried about employees parking and...
No, sir.
I just, wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Yeah.
I have quite a few questions, and I'm sure the state would bring out in the open. But like, for us, we're looking at just the zoning and parking and drops off, things like that. With the house, the square footage. I mean, how many children are you planning on having?
So, when the fire marshal came, I said six. I later found out that the law is up to eight. Unfortunately, with my work schedule, I have not been able to contact my licensing specialist or the fire marshal department to clarify that and to determine that number.
The age, and the age? What age limit?
Any age.
Any age? Okay. Do you know how many square foot, square feet we're talking about as far as your kitchen and living room combination?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's 544 square feet.
Pardon me?
544 square feet on the first floor.
Five hundred and...
Forty-four.
Forty-four square feet. That's small for six kids. They would make that determination.
That's the state for me.
Do I have any comments or questions?
The only question I had, I think everything's in order here as far as the paperwork goes. I see the names of the property owners, but I know a couple of those folks, and I know they don't live there. So, I was just curious if your neighbors were okay with it.
So, I haven't talked to them, my neighbors per se. I was just told that I would need to contact the landlords of the places. But that's definitely something I, I can do, is speak with them to just confirm.
Yeah, I, right, the, the law only requires you to get the permission from the property owners, adjacent property owners, which you have done. But like you say, all of those are all, those are all landlords. Those are not, none of those are actually residents. But I think if you had anything from any of the residents, if you talked to them, maybe you got a little something in writing, that probably would go well in front of the zoning.
I agree.
The only other, the issue that I have is under 2025-78. It does state that the occupy no more than 25% of the store, of the floor space of the dwelling. Clearly, you know, half. Not that I have any particular problem with that, but understand that when you go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that that may come up. So, you may want to... If, if you have anything in writing from the state saying that the area is suitable, you may also want to have that.
Okay.
Going with that, I see you only have one restroom, and that's upstairs.
Yes.
Do you have any children in the house yourself?
I don't, no. I don't have any children, that would affect the total.
This, they'll, six, or wait, whatever the state will allow you to have would all be...
Yes.
Chairman, if I may. So, for the BZA, the site will be posted. First and second class letters will be sent to all property owners. It will be advertised in the newspaper. She's already submitted her application. And the hearing will be scheduled after we get a few more things from you. So, as, as quick as you can get those, that'd be helpful. And we're going to schedule as quickly as we can. So, it will be posted.
Okay, so we're looking for a recommendation for the Board of Appeals, either favorable or not favorable? Based on... Based on what's permitted in that area?
Have a third option of just leaving it all up to the Board of Appeals, so.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, you know, if it weren't for the, for that 25% thing, I'd be all over saying, you just go ahead and have at it. But I think that that is, may present an issue. And so, I don't want to give a favorable appeal, but I'm not going to oppose it.
Okay.
So, I'm not, I'm standing pat right now.
I'll make a motion that we let the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second to that.
I'll second that then, because that's what, essentially what I said. So, you're perfect, I love it.
I would like to be able to send you our comments to the Board of Appeals on our thoughts. Is there a further discussion on the motion not to give a recommendation? Will the Appeals make the decision?
How are you going to communicate your comments?
When, when Daryl gives the report, he will list our comments that we made.
I'm sorry, when I do the minutes?
When you report, you'll be at the Board of Appeals meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll give your report from this commission. If that commission, if it passes, it'll let the decision up to the Board of Appeals. But we have the following comments. And you would state the comments that we present to you tonight.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. Are you making comments?
We will make comments after the motion.
Oh, okay, I got it.
After the motion, not as part of the motion, but after the motion.
I was wondering how this is going to happen. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Further discussion? Any comments from the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of not making a recommendation, that have the decision based on what you, ever you said, how you, ever you said it, I guess you got the words. The Board of Appeals to make the decision. So, all those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
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 Those nay? It's Carrie. Now, let's list some comments that we want to present to the Board of Appeals. And I'll start out. My comment is, I'm concerned about the square footage. Only two rooms. Not being, and then if, using 25% of that 544, that's not much room for six kids, children. The other thing is, is there a division between the kitchen and the living room?
Not at this time. I don't have a gate, but I will be getting a gate to separate the area.
Concerned that if you have infants, little kids, where are you changing the diapers compared to where you're preparing the food?
Sure. I would be changing the diapers and stuff in the living room. I would have that station set up, and then I would be preparing the food in the kitchen.
The concern is, didn't stay to any age. So, while some of the kids are going upstairs to the bathroom, are they going to be unsupervised? Since it's only one person there?
Yeah, so I would accompany whatever child that needed me to accompany them to the bathroom. And then I do plan on having cameras to keep eyes on the other children while they're downstairs.
I read all our comments.
I think notification from the neighbors is going to happen, so.
Okay, then, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Carrie.
Next item, storage today. Daryl, you want to lead us off on that before we...
Yes.
That's what we got our site plans from last month from, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me find my, the correct pile here.
Yeah, same way here.
So, next is stores today. There, so, if you brought your prints, this is basically just a milestone where they're going to be talking about just presenting the preliminary site plan just for presentation, so they can keep moving on along. You see from the packet, there are a number of comment letters. So, it's rolling along pretty good. Remember, it was very far down the road, with the exception of that pesky sewer pipe, that they're not going to affect anyway, touch, whatever. So, they had to reset things when they redesigned the one-way flow and made the site somewhat, a little bit shorter. So, and presenting the preliminary site plan for presentation today only. They, they need to get the next hurdle done before they could do the MDE permit for the one-site waterways.
Is there a representative here tonight?
They are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of Planning Commission. Bill Brennan with B&amp;R Design Group, 300 West Patrick Street, Frederick, Maryland. We're here on behalf of the owners and the contract purchaser, Eric Kinerman. Just giving you an update. We did get concept plan approval a couple of months ago. We refiled preliminary site plan with the county and the state. State doesn't have any comments since they approved the entrance. Well, we don't have the entrance permit yet because we're back at preliminary site plan. But the state doesn't have any comments. We're going through the county. We finally have comments on the landscape plan. We haven't received comments from DPW, the county planning department, I believe. Health Department, we haven't received comments updating, on the update plan. MDE is waiting for the preliminary site plan approval because we already, we have a permit in hand. We have to modify it and reduce our impacts on the wetlands. And that permit expires coming here in May, I believe. We're pushing that in order to modify that permit before it expires. Otherwise, we have a couple of minor comments from the town engineer and a clarification about some grades over the existing sewer going up, which are new after approximately three years. But we'll, we'll address those. They're basically mostly construction type of comments that we're addressing right now. So, as soon as we get the Carroll County Planning Department comments, we'll, we'll be back before you. Hopefully, with a preliminary, maybe, maybe a combined final site plan, if we can figure out how to do that with staff. So, that's where we're at, and we'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any first?
Go ahead.
Okay. On sheet five, maintenance and two-year warranty, why are you listed in Frederick County?
That's our landscaper. He does most of his work in Frederick County. So, we'll address that. That's on the landscape plan.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that should be Carroll County, right?
Well, I don't think, in Frederick County, yeah, we'll address what the Carroll County requires, but I think they actually want us to take that out.
Okay.
Same thing with some of the city of Frederick requirements. They're a little bit more stringent than, than Carroll County, but we'll address, we'll go back to the less stringent requirements.
And then, with your parking, you're allowing one parking space, and that's an ADA. That's on page one, item number eight. If that's an ADA, can I park here?
Right now, we have, well, actually, I don't believe anybody's going to be parking in, in the space. Right now, we have, well, actually, I don't believe anybody's going to be parking in the space. But we do have two spaces.
I can only see one on here, but there is two?
Yeah, one's parallel to the road and one's perpendicular. The ADA is perpendicular to the road, and then the other space is parallel to the road. In basically in that same area. Otherwise, I don't think anybody's going to be using them.
They're going to park in front of their units, they're not actually going to park their base.
I'm just surprised that, you know, we're required to have one ADA.
Well, I think that that's probably because it's commercial.
It's, there's no differentiation in state law.
There's no employees there, right.
Right.
So, I mean, state law says we need an ADA space, so there it is, the signage will be there. If they want to use it, fine, but I believe everybody's going to be parking in front of their unit. The two, there's two ADA units in there with push button to roll up the, for the roller doors.
Right.
Electrical, so they're going to get out of their car, hit their button, go into their unit, load up their car, get back in their car, and off they go. So, yeah, I agree with you, but that's what the code says, and we'll just move on. They're going to ask us why the planning commission and the engineer put an ADA space out here, but.
You're okay, I guess we are too. Still on page one, item 14, what about the trash and stuff like that? There's no dumpster, and I think I mentioned that before, I couldn't find where you're going to put the dumpster.
Yeah, we're not.
So what are we doing, what are you doing with your?
We want them to take their stuff away. There is, there, we don't want a dumpster, and I believe another storage facility in town doesn't have a dumpster. The dumpster is just going to collect trash for us, and we would rather them just take their.
It's not required as a commercial site?
It is not. So if they use less than one cubic yard? If they use less than one cubic yard?
But we don't want.
We don't want them using, you want zero cubic yards.
We want zero cubic yards, and I think the city wants zero cubic yards.
I mean, yeah, I mean, bad enough for some of these places, people throw their old furniture out and everything else, and leave it on you to.
Well, I think.
Or not you, but.
The nice thing about today with the remote cameras and the controlled access, you can really govern and know who is in violation of just dumping garbage there. So I believe that would be something that the owner will have to take care of and address if it is an issue.
Somewhere before final, I'd like to see something in color, some rendering, or something of what it's going to look like as far as the color of the doorway, what it looks like, and also the sign. The sign's going to be a separate permit, is that correct?
We haven't agreed on the sign yet.
Pardon me?
We haven't agreed on the sign yet.
Oh, that's fine, I mean, I think we have some prose on there, what we anticipated it'd be look like, but you would like an illustration?
Yeah, we would. I think the commission would like to see what the sign's going to look like, since it's going to be there, what, 35 feet, I believe, stated 35 feet up? Don't have to look, but I.
That's, yeah, that's the maximum. But we would, sign notes, yes, four by, 40 square feet. The maximum height is 35. But we will get the owner to focus on a sign and ask him to, as we're moving forward, that you're interested in the graphics now, and now that we know.
Before final.
Now that we're, now that we know the project's moving along, we can do that.
And the last thing I have is, I still have a problem with the barbed wire around the top of the fence.
We could take, we can remove that.
Coming into town, I just not see something that's in barbed wire. That's just my opinion on it, that's all. That's all I have, anybody from the commission have anything else?
I have just a couple of questions off of the letters that came back from the board, from the county. So they're going to require a floodplain study. I mean, I don't recall this being in a floodplain, but it needs a floodplain study because you're within 10 vertical feet of the floodplain elevation.
I think we went this, on the very beginning, MDE has told us, no floodplain study, and we have a permit. So they're an advisory to the town, and the town engineer agrees with MDE, so we're not going to be, we're not going to be performing a floodplain study. We're following MDE's direction.
But we talked about that six months ago or something like that.
I just was reviewing.
It wasn't going to be required or something like that?
Yeah, I just was reviewing the letter, and that came back from the county, and I was, that's kind of why I was a little bit surprised to see it back in the things from the county. You know, that they're asking, that the county is asking for a floodplain study, but if, you know.
We're in the town.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, since this is presentation, anybody from the floor have any comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
And I will remember to take that barbed wire off.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Ridge Road amendments plaque presentation for lots 203, 204, 205, and 206, Wilson Homes. Is that something that we covered? Months before, but that was for dividing, or no, making four into two or something like that?
Yeah, correct, that's correct.
So what we're here for tonight is just a, just wanted you guys to see the amended plat. That's a real thing, it's circling through the county. Once they check everything for all the legal requirements of those two plats, they will require the chairman to take a sharpie and put a signature on the drawing. So this is just to share with you guys what's happening. And the next thing that happens is, I'll call you chairman, and we're signing those mylar's.
Okay. I have any comments about it?
None.
All right, thank you. Guess next thing is your report. Give me a minute to get organized, will you? Okay.
Hey, good bit of meetings. One really highlight is the fact that we have a little bit of a challenge with the entranceway coming off of Frederick Street for the Memorial Park expansion. There's a water, there's a mess of, sort of flooding with heavy rain that pulls between the Rentan hands property and our property. So we met with the Rentan hands, the director of Parks and Rec, Vicar, myself, and we asked them if they would not mind giving us easement across their property, saving us tens of thousands and thousands of dollars instead of going around their property. They said they would do that for free. So that's being drawn up now by Arrow and presented to the Rentan hands for signature for that easement, which is a really, really cool thing. That's very nice of them to do that, because we're going to mess them up for a little bit. DPW and myself did meet with Carroll County Development Review about the, as well as their, as the staff at Arrow, about their Public Works Building, you know, just to keep that going. City manager, Wibrecht, myself, or mostly Jim, actually, are working to get the 3300 Harney Road property annexed in. They currently have water, like a couple of properties through there. Their septic failed, they're trying to desperately get annexed in. The requirement, if they're going to have water and sewer, they need to be part of the city, so they pull them in. During the discovery on that, of course, it can't be easy. There's a sliver of land, it's sort of like, it was as surprised as where it was and how that gets recorded, so we'll be working on that over the next couple of days.
Are all the houses closer to town from that property in town?
All right, say that one more time, please.
So this is like the last one on the left going out of town?
Yes.
Is everything closer to town in town?
No.
So this is, got it.
So how many of those other houses are not? I mean, we're talking about the Alexander property.
Yes, yeah.
Then there's what, three, four other?
I think it's three others, I'm not.
They're not, they're not on city water or city sewer?
I know, I think at least one is.
I think they're all served, except the Alexander house does not have sewer, which is why they're trying to annex. The others were connected prior to the current policy of not extending water and sewer past the city limits.
So a lot of activity with Garnet Ridge and more, even more so with Mount Brook Farms. I sent you guys by email, this beautifully well-done colored, two-page document. That shows the phasing that happened over many years, so just keep that in mind, you could change a little bit, maybe not. A lot of things to control, remember, we do not have water. All right, so none of that's real right now, so it's gold, and so just wanted you guys to see that, okay? Well, again, none of it's real yet.
Yeah, also, I don't, I don't think the townhouses meet our current code, right?
Yeah.
The townhouses that they're showing don't meet our code currently, right? We're supposed to, we don't allow front-loaded townhouses.
Okay, well, so this was their concept drawing from, it's been around for probably at least a year. But, yeah, I don't know that that's why that was, but again, we have plenty of time to address that.
Yeah, I was just curious if they know that.
That's a good catch.
About, a lot of them do, but a lot of them don't. So there are alleys behind maybe half of them to allow for rear loading, and I think that that's a, certainly a question that we need to.
So that, that drawing there is just to give you guys the numbers of the houses, that is not, and is not, that is not their intention?
We're not, this isn't set in stone, this is.
That's a phasing document, yeah.
But it looks, it looks accurate to what we saw the last, the last plan that he showed, so.
It is updated to the last concept that he showed us, getting rid of some of the extraneous roadways and stuff.
Guys finished with that before I interrupt?
Yep.
This is from July 23.
While we're still on Garnet Ridge, we talked about the second exit, the emergency exit being in the back.
Right.
Also going down and coming out there by the Alexander property. Isn't there an easement or a road or something that's on the plaque to come out there? We don't want to forget that. It has something to do with the, side of the Alexander property. There's a proposed alley, street.
We discussed that the last time.
Yes, that was going to be used for emergency to tie in Garnet Ridge. Talked about that, so when we, when we do, pardon me?
The Sewell property, right?
The Sewell property.
Okay, so it's on the Sewell property, not Alexander, right?
On the Sewell property, yeah.
That's not going to be affected by the annexation, right?
No. So, yeah, so.
Because we don't want to lose, we don't want to lose that emergency exit.
Yeah, so when you come off of the, when you go through the Garnet Ridge, where that ends.
Yes.
There will be an emergency use vent, if you will, into the Sewell property. Yeah, I was like, man, I've lost it.
We're back.
Just want to lose that and make sure everybody's aware that that happens.
There's still a 50, right, in Garnet Ridge, 50 homes?
Yeah, 50.
Right, so it's right on the, right on the number.
50 is the number.
City managers worked diligently and beautifully on working with Flowserve to get the easement access across that property. It's still in, still in the works, and sounding good from everything I have heard back from the city manager. Happy, Jim.
Good.
Let's see, so CDM Smith and myself, we have monthly progress meetings just to go over the projects. It's just been pretty good. The, it's nice to go over these projects that you may have not had any activity on in a while, but CDM Smith has a really awesome spreadsheet ability, I'll tell you that, so that's been very helpful. Mount Brook, traffic impact study in the bypass, that's, you know, being talked about more and more. Again, you know, it's like this is, this thing's alive with the state highway, which is really cool, you know. Four years ago, it wasn't, so that's very exciting. So Chairman Parker, city manager, Wibrecht, myself, went down last week to Carroll County and looked at the master plan. Jim spoke, city manager, Wibrecht, spoke with the, our comp plan and where we're at and a few other things. It's nice to get out of the office and go on the field trip. So the training for the Citizens Planning Advisory Committee, the inaugural, did, may I ask, any of you sign up for that?
Couple of us.
I didn't.
Have to go slower, that's three of you? All good, nice. Yeah, that's going to be a really cool course.
Have any openings left?
Well, I'm hoping to videotape it. You know, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any type of educational class, in my opinion, it's not.
Good point.
So, well, thank you, Jess, hope you, I mean, did they tell you that you were in, or you wait and see?
I haven't heard anything.
I'll put it a good word for Barry.
25th was cut off date, wasn't it?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
21st?
I didn't see anything that told us how we were going to be notified, though.
Hard enough to get on.
Yeah.
Hard to get on, it was hard, their website was very hard.
Yeah, I thought it was a piece of cake.
All right, Dan. So gentlemen, the chairman, if that's, I have nothing else unless you have questions?
Not on that, but maybe you can just give us a quick rundown on 20 supply? You mentioned that last month, is that, that still in the, on the good side?
Oh, yeah.
Out of the county? Is that what? Out of the county, I mean, they're going through.
Eye contact, see the other size, hey, you have any bad news from me or anything?
Which, Dave, we already talked about. Outdoor site out of cannabis. More on that, the marijuana.
I have heard, I have heard nothing, so, I'm not a farmer, but what that tells me, what you guys have heard, is that spring crop's not going to happen.
Okay. That's a good sign, I think. And I guess Pat Small, that's probably off the books now?
Which one?
Pat Small. Levin Franklin Street.
Demolition of the garage.
The demolition and the new storage.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know that the building's been totally cleaned out. I think his goal is now to try and rent, rent the old auto parts store out.
Existing.
Yeah.
Okay.
The old parts store, but not, what about the buildings that he had submitted to tear down?
Not going to go through with that?
As far as I know, no. Project's fell through. I'm just glad he didn't invest in a brand-new building.
Right, going through the rest of them, the actives, we talked about the construction phase programs. You got most of it, we've covered. Looks like Evapco is still working pretty, pretty swiftly out there.
On the parking lot or the building?
On the building, on the building. I can't see how they can do on the parking lot because it's full of vehicles.
I've already met with them, another engineer for Evapco on the next parking lot. So there's another parking lot, it's going to be sort of the same thing, we just finished with them on the parking lot that's at the corner of Allen Dale. So, yeah, they're doing the next parking lot. So I met with their people, and just waiting to hear back from them for what's next. In fact, I don't really have the legal name for what that site's going to be, but it's something like Evapco Parking Lot 2. In fact, I don't really have the legal name for what that site's going to be, but it's something of Evapco Parking Lot Two.
Now, that's a separate parcel from where the, the three houses were that.
It is.
That's a whole separate parcel.
Yeah, so that'll require Board of Zoning Appeals hearing as well.
Okay, moving on, legal update, Jay?
I got it. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Oh.
Till Jay catches up.
Okay. So you got a few more questions there. I guess we, I didn't hear anything about the, the three apartment in, on four thirty East Baltimore? Any, any update on that, or?
No, and that will, yeah, so I just gotta, we just have to hook back up and talk about more. There's more that they need to do. More information that they're going to need for their purposes.
That's a board of appeals case too, isn't it?
Could it be a change you used to go to three apartments from a current?
Change you from, you know, from a single house to apartment building, three, two or three?
Three, right?
Three.
Three.
Up to three. I don't think that that's a BZA scenario. They have to meet requirements for square footage, parking. I mean, there'll certainly be a site plan.
Right.
So the, should be a site plan for the amount of parking spaces. The city code requires three off-street parking spaces per dwelling and, you know, dwellings, you know, kitchen, bathroom, bedroom scenario.
What was those numbers again?
Four thirty East.
Four thirty, okay.
Then, looking at my notes here, I think, so the Garnet Ridge final plan is like due on three March, right? Because it's been, they, they only have like twelve months from our last preliminary plan approval, right?
No, so you.
We extended, that was extended. That was extended.
So that should be.
Months ago, three months ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's been a rough time, really, with all these projects. So you go like, let me go. No, so all my, Dan, all my, I keep a cheat sheet for all the, all the anniversaries, dates, what have you.
That's what I thought I was looking at.
So they don't have to, well, I mean, it's, it's, so they don't have to present in front of you. They can simply submit to the city.
Okay.
So they, they submit to the city within that year, they're, they're good.
Okay, okay.
And that automatically renews it then?
Okay, yep, very good. And then we, we heard the, you know, the rumor that eventually this Sewell Farm Annex was going to ask about the Community Village, I guess, permission to have that. So I believe that's like an application, they have to fill out an application and submit it? Is that how that process works?
They've submitted it, right? So they've submitted. So when the annexation comes in, alright, so for the Community Village, they must submit a, an, an application. And so the application is, again, that's their version of an application.
Okay.
It's a lot. So that comes in and it goes to the Mayor and City Council in next, is it March? So in March. And open it up, if you will, introduce it, and then it will come from the planning commission for promise or what have you.
Before they approve it, right? Okay.
Then back up to the Mayor and City Council.
And so all that happened for Mountain Brook too, right? I guess before I came along with it?
Cause, yeah, you and I were just babies. It's been a long time.
Well, how could, how could it be way back? Community Village didn't exist way back.
It's been around, Community Village has been around for a long time. That predates Carol Vista, does it not?
Yes, it does, but it doesn't predate when they, that property came, they were started building on that.
So that was brought, I mean, I guess when that was brought in, it was a.
I think they were designated back in like two thousand and five.
I was just curious, yeah, yeah. Cause I, I think if I remember, I think it was like ninety-nine when the Community Village ordinance came out. I think that's what I saw. But then that was before ninety-nine when Mountain Brook was there. That's a lot. But if they, if it was, they applied after that, that's fine. Just curious. Interested to see the process. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, Jay, you available?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. What I want to talk about was, I tried to keep you updated on the Developer Rights and Responsibilities Agreement that we've been talking about every month when I'm with you. And I'm like the salesman that says, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. It still hasn't happened. We actually have made progress. In fact, that in January, they actually gave us an agreement and we reviewed it. And then we sent it to the city staff and the staff reviewed it. And then we had a big meeting with the developers and the city staff and everybody sitting around the table. And we wanted to talk about the big issues because there's no point in getting to the small ones if we can't reverse all the big ones. And the big ones were, were quite hefty. They were the issue of the road. And that's what we've been talking about with you all. The issues that came up were not only the cost of building the road to what standards the road would be built, who would review the road, whether the road would connect the whole way through, as we've talked about. And in what phase and who would be responsible for doing all of that. And you can imagine those are, are big items, big-ticket dollar items. And the developer's position was pretty clear. They said that they did not mind giving the easement for the road. So however wide we wanted it. And remember, we're looking at this road as possibly something that would be a state highway in the future, a state highway to be maintained. So they didn't have a problem in giving the right of way that would be required for that. However, they did have a problem building the road to state highway standards. They said that their use of the road for their development would not justify the increased road stats. You can imagine the depth, the stuff that's made up of a road. It wouldn't justify that. And so they basically said at that point, they expected the, the town or someone, but not them, to make up the difference. And you see what I'm saying? Like if a road that's a normal road costs X dollars and a state road costs two X, they expect that extra part to be made up by somebody else, not them. And they also talked about the road that would be off-site, which we're talking about the Flowserve property. They said that they see the rationale of it being designed and being built and constructed by the same entity. So you don't have two contractors out there and two designers and the whole nine yards. And they said they would be happy if we wanted them to, to coordinate that, but they did not feel a responsibility that they needed to pay for that. So saying a different way, the way we've left it so far is that they felt that their traffic would be served by their own road at their own standards. And anything in addition to that would be something that someone else needs to pay for. And I guess the someone else would be the city. The connection that they would make to one ninety-four, they realized they have to make it to the standard that the state highway will make them. But the connection to one forty, they did not talk about that, and we did not talk about that. I mean, we talked about it, but nobody came to an understanding of what that would be because it's so theoretical at this point. So I left the meeting pretty disappointed because it seemed like we were not as close to where we thought we would be. I guess the positives is that getting a right-of-way through there is, is a pretty good thing. And having the connection would be a good thing. But the connection, regardless of who pays, put that out of your head, is going to really depend on the traffic studies. And so I know there was a meeting, a follow-up meeting where the engineers and the traffic engineers got together and talked about the traffic study. And, and I wasn't part of that meeting and I don't think the report's finalized, so it's, it's too early to get to that. But the important part is if a traffic study doesn't show that they have a need to have an exit on each end to mitigate the traffic impacts that happen elsewhere in the city, then they're going to say that they should not have to connect at each end of the, the road to the highways, that they'd only have one exit. And so that's going to be super critical for the town and the town engineer to follow the traffic study and make sure it uses the right parameters to find out what the truth is going to be on that. So the thought of having a DARA to outline things is not going to happen anytime in the next coming weeks because I don't think there's an agreement that anybody would sign at this point in time. So that's kind of where we are. I know that Darrell and Jim have been working with the traffic engineer and the town engineer. But it is a process. And that was just the road issue, okay? We never even got to anything else. I mean, if you solve the road issue, I think you probably could solve the water and the sewer and all those issues. But those are the concerns that were raised. Do you have any questions for me about that?
I have a big question, and that is that if there is no connection to one forty at the Flowserve end, then you have four hundred and fifty houses with only one exit.
Yeah. That's, that's what they're saying.
You know, my, my understanding, this was always presented to us as they were going to build that so that they had the two exits that they needed. So I, I feel kind of hoodwinked here.
Well, I mean, I don't think that, that's the final word. I mean, I'm giving you this as it progresses so that you're not surprised when you can say this went one way or the other. But that was certainly something that we talked about to them is that, it was clear. The city manager told them that the planning commission is expecting two connections here. And, you know, they didn't say, okay. They just said, well, we're going to look at other ways that we can possibly mitigate things. And the mitigation, again, is beyond my area of expertise, but the mitigation isn't just in their development. Mitigation is at the square, right? Cause we said if you had one entrance, the people would have to go up to the square to turn left and blah, 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 blah. And so there, maybe, they may offer other alternatives that they think are mitigating the condition of the square. Cause that's really what it comes down to is that they're trying to objectify things that we say in our ordinance that certain intersections in road have to have a certain letter grade. And if the letter grade is below what we say it is, and it'll be added to that, then they have to mitigate it to get back to a higher letter grade. And that's where we are. So you're right, councilman, there is, there is a little, there's not just a little gulf. There's a big gulf between where we are and where they are. And of course, this is, this creates a lot of issues for us because we really want to act on the Flowserve easement. The city managers work really hard to get that. That is a huge, important thing for the city to have that. But as I said at the last meeting, it's a little disingenuous for the city to take an easement and then not do anything with it and just say we're going to hold it. So there may be some issue with that. I don't know the budgeting, but I do know it enough that I don't believe we have this on the CIP. And I know we don't have any money set aside to do these things. And, you know, those were some of the questions the developer asked because those would be relevant for his knowledge to know whether the city's going to be a partner. So when you show up and say, hey, city, we expect you to pay for part of this, show me where you have it in the budget. And you say, well, I don't have it in the budget and I don't have it in my plan. That sends a message to them as well.
I have a question for you. When all this started with Meadow Brook, I remember in the, you know, when they did the concept or whatever and showed the, correct me if I'm wrong, the greenway, was it the greenway? At that point, wasn't the bill of goods that, that was, that's going to be part of the bypass? I mean, that was kind of, and, and tell me the verbiage is correct here. Because if that's the case, at that point, that first meeting that we all sat around and listened, they had to know that it had to be, have some guidelines to state standards, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. That, that piece of the road has always been on the town's comprehensive plan as a bypass or a greenway or whatever. It's been something, it's always been there. And throughout the years, we have been acquiring pieces, maybe very slow pieces, but we have talked about this for a long, long time. And so I'm not sure that they didn't understand that there had to be a connection on each side. I think that now it is a question of the price. Because the city had a, a big coup, I think, in the fact that the city manager was able to work with state highway to get them interested in signing an agreement with us about the future of that road. And that agreement, of course, it's, it's theoretical at this point, but that agreement had the things you're talking about, that it would be designed to state standards, it would be reviewed by the state, you'd have to have extra state permits, all the things that would be made up of that. And I think that is the shocker, or at least the pretend shocker for a developer saying, wait a second. I thought this was something the city was going to do in the future. They've even said that. That if the city wanted to make this road up to state standards at some time in the future, it could do that. That's not, was, that was not what I was thinking the talk was in listening to your meetings, just like you. I, I was thinking it was more of a, hey, the developer's willing to do this for us to make his development go.
Exactly. That's how I took it, you know, and. You can tell I'm not pleased with that. I don't think anybody is.
Well, I don't think the, the last act has been written yet.
I know, I know.
Yeah, and so I don't, I don't, I don't muddy, I don't want to muddy the waters, but I also want you to, I just got to tell you, like, you know, I have been involved with you guys for as long as you guys have been there, right? I mean, we've been on the same team. And it was just a shocker to me to kind of hear their attorney kind of say that they didn't know. They didn't use those words, but that was the idea. I was just shocked that we weren't as close as we were supposed to. And I think it, it shocked the city's team a little bit. And it's going to put pressure on us to decide, do you even want to do a DARA? There's no requirement that we do that. Do we even want to do that if there's not going to be a promise? And then, of course, what do we do about Flowserve? Because if Flowserve comes in next week and says, yeah, here's the easement, but we expect you to, to build this portion of the road now or in the next couple of years, what do we do then?
Jim, have we, have we had that discussion with Flowserve, what their expectations are?
Their corporate is reviewing the traffic easement yet again. They had some confusion between, there are currently two easements being requested across Flowserve property, one for us for the future road and one for Garnet Ridge for utilities. And apparently at the corporate level, there was some misunderstanding about them being two separate items. So they were refreshed within the last couple of weeks and now we're taking another look at it with their legal team. That's, that's all I've got at this point. The, the expectation certainly is that with the Mountain Brook Farm project, that the road would come across their property.
But they, but they, but they understand it would be as part of that second phase of development, so it may be some distance in the future.
That is their expectation.
They're not looking for us to build the road next week. They, they understand it'll be part of the larger project at the other, you know, somewhere down the line.
Their expectation, what's been conveyed to them is that when the second phase of Mountain Brook Farm happens, that that road connecting to one forty across their property would happen at that time.
So who would own the road at Flowserve?
That would be us.
That section. Who would own that? Would that, that wouldn't be state road at this point in time.
So if, if we have the happy ending and this all gets built.
Happy ending?
It would be ultimately like, like any other subdivision road, it would become the city's road for an interim period at best. The state has just in conversation and a very rough outline for a potential letter of agreement agreed that if the road is built all the way from one forty at Flowserve to the existing terminus of Antrim Boulevard at Trevanian, they see that as benefiting the state highway network. They see that it should be, they agree that it should be a state road, once it's built.
Once all of it is built. So.
So then there are conditions now that they want to put on the development of the road to make sure that it meets their needs and their specifications. And that's where everything is starting to, now that we're putting dollar figures to things, now things are starting to unravel a bit. That it's, you know, not just conceptual. Now we're, we're, you know, starting to talk about figures and who's going to pay for this. And so now it's getting very challenging.
Step at a time and keep pushing forward, right, Jay?
Yeah, it, it, one of the things we kind of have to remember, and I bring this up all the time, and it's not, it's not anything negative that, about this developer. But when you hear that things are going to happen in phases, you have to kind of understand how the developer's going to finance their project. So the first phase is the one near one ninety-four, right? Everything that doesn't require a bridge and require going over Flowserve. And they have development costs that they have to put in. So the grading and the water and the sewer and all that kind of stuff to make the land sellable. And so that means they have to borrow a lot of money for that and try to recoup it on phase one. Which means they divide it up on all the lots that they can sell in phase one and how they recoup their money. And phase two, then, that would require the bridge and the off-site improvements and, you know, if it goes according to what we're talking about. And they divide those costs up, which would be future costs, higher cost over the number of lots in phase two, let's say. And this is just general. And the issue that we are always gonna be worried with is that the lot cost in phase two costs too much for them to build, and they don't do it.
That's true.
Okay, and that's what happened on the same scale of O'Brien Street Bridge...
Right.
Where the expensive stuff was put off to the last phase, the last phase had six houses, or six lots, or eight lots, or, you know, some number of lots, that wasn't a very big lot, number, and it was easier not to sell those lots and build those lots than it was to pay the money to build the bridge, and they went bankrupt and walked away. So that is our risk, especially when we are looking at things in today, 2025, and they gave you a projection of sellout for lots being 2035. So you can kick something down the road 10 years, and it sounds really good, just like O'Brien Street Bridge did, and you get five or six years, seven years down the road, and we're not here anymore, and now it's, doesn't look so good. So that's why I'm concerned when I say about the Flowserve piece, is that, yeah, they understand when it's gonna be timed, but what happens if it never happens? You know, the city probably needs to be prepared to step in, at least to the things where we encouraged it, and I guess this is not, this is not the legal part of it, but we went to Flowserve for the easement, we're the ones that made that promise, not the developer. So we might have to try to put ourselves to make good on that, because they are a corporate citizen here. So those are the big thoughts that have to be made, big dollars, the mayor and council really gonna have to struggle with this, because there may be a need for funds that the city has to come up with. So, I don't mean to be Duke and Gloom, but that was kind of how I left the meeting, just how you're feeling right now, I left the meeting a couple of weeks ago with the same thought of, hey, this isn't exactly as I was thinking, it's not simply drawing up an agreement, there's some things that have to be worked out. And, um, so you know the process is, it gets worked out, it goes to the mayor and council, then it comes back to you all for a comment, as Darrell explained, that goes back to the mayor and council, um, it's like going to the mayor and council in March, that, that's a couple of weeks from now, so, you know, maybe in April, we'll see.
Worked out before they asked for final on fa, on, uh, phase one.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't see...
We're gonna have to know where we stand.
Right, I don't see anything moving forward on any phase until we have this hammered out.
Well, and we had told them that we would be willing, as a city, to, to do a DARA if it was hammered out, because that's where the agreement was, with a concept approval, um, they wouldn't have to go through all preliminaries and finals that, because remember, they want to be locked into the entitlements that a DARA gives them, so they want that, and we want to be, them to be locked into what they're gonna build. So it's all positive, like Jim said, I like the, if it's a happy ending, all of it still works out, but it might not be as simple as we were thinking was gonna happen, so it's gonna require a little bit more thought and effort. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Not good thoughts to leave us with, so, but thank you.
Appreciate it, Jay.
Yep, thank you.
Alright.
I'm not surprised at all.
Try to stay on top of it. Alright, anything else for legal?
Nope.
Alright, uh, what do we have from Tiffany from the county?
I had placed it in front of you guys, the, the report from Tiffany, um, looks like everything is the same that she had read last month, now, so, um, order sewer update, that's, that's in the process, housing study, that's, um, um, I think, where'd she say?
Um, the housing study I thought was complete, cause she had, they had a copy of it at the, um, at their comprehensive plan meeting here at the library last week.
Did you guys check that out, by the way?
We did.
Yeah, so, okay. Mass plan update, that's, that's, uh, rolling through us, I guess what, um, um, is going on down there, um, um, at the county. Yeah, annual report, we've already satisfied, we, we took care of that. About it. Tiffany, if you're listening, um, I, I apologize, I knew you would've done a lot better on that, but, uh, that's your party.
Okay, moving on, uh, old business, so we have some discussion on the comp plan, update on that, comments?
Had a really good meeting the other, last week.
Yeah, do we, do we have something on that?
So, also, I just wanna say, Chairman, a great job on, so these meetings, that, when they sat down all those months ago, they, they thought we're gonna need 11 meetings, or whatever it was. So somehow, they're, they're, they're pretty, i- it's rather amazing for what's gonna be presented, you guys have seen, it's, it's a lot, and it's still a lot sitting there in the kitty from, from the, um, surveys and, um, person, um, interviews haven't been, um, done yet, it's gonna be a lot more than, than what we already have. So I just wanna say thank you for keeping, you know, letting them guys run their agenda, and keeping, keeping the, the meetings rolling.
What's, uh, has there been any update about the key person interviews, and when we can try to make them happen, is there anything that we can do as the commission to try to make that happen?
There is an email in my inbox that, um, I have not looked over, I mean, they're, they're on their things as far as what, what they need to do, um, I, I'll check that out and, um...
Our next meeting is March the 25th.
Yeah, so, I just, uh, the, Chris had a friend put all the data from the survey in an AI generator, I don't know how it works, but the write-up is very good, so I would recommend that everybody reads that and kind of compare that to what, what we've talked about at the meeting, but, but I thought it turned out really well, I mean, you got, I mean, I'm, I'm always skeptical, so I've gotta make sure that it actually lines up to the, to the actual responses that we had, but it was laid out very well, so I'd recommend everybody takes time and read that.
Anything else under the comp?
Not on the comp plan, no.
Okay, let's move on to anything on the new business?
Um, Darrell, I sent you an email, I sent an email about a week or so ago, about trying to get someone maybe from the state to come out and, and do a educational thing for us on, um, non-Euclidean zoning, to try to, to, um, you know, what, what can we do, especially with some of the infill lots in, in infill property, infill properties in the city, to, you know, maybe some mixed use, and, so, uh, can we try to get that?
Yeah, I'll reach out and see what, I mean, I've, so...
I don't know if that'd be Joe or whatever, but...
Yeah, yeah, I'll reach out.
There, there was some, I, I, I'm trying to remember, but I, I would like to have something a little bit more focused on our concerns about the community village and, and, and mixed-use zonings, so we can talk what our, our, what our specific questions and, and circumstances are here in Tawny Town.
Yeah, sure, I, I was just thinking that might be the person that we want training, if they gave that, if they had a seminar already.
We'll talk a little bit more once we go, if we are the ones for the county to go, or, you know, for our local.
And especially with, with Soul's Farm thing coming in.
It's not all three of us, or at least one of us that makes it to the class. Alright.
Darrell's gonna put in a good word for us.
Yeah, Darrell. Jim?
I, I wasn't able to attend the, the, uh, Fall Planning Commissioners Association Conference with you guys, um, but I'm wondering if, if the phrase form-based codes rings a bell from any of the workshops? I know in previous years' conferences, they've had examples of that, where some local governments have, uh, exercised a combination of Euclidean and form-based zoning, where Euclidean zoning talks about the, uh, the, the uses, and basically clusters uses by, you know, by zoning districts, and then has all the setback requirements and lot sizes and so on, whereas form-based codes, uh, look more at, they take a look from like the public view, and what the impact of the site is going to be, you know, if it's developed in a certain way, um, rather than it being, uh, I guess, prescriptive, um, you know, it, it allows more flexibility, and there are some communities that have, uh, areas that would otherwise be like a specific zoning district that are form-based zoning areas, even though they might have Euclidean zoning in other parts of the community, so certainly something that can be looked at, but, um, and there is a, um, oh, golly, drawing a blank on the name, there's a... Blank on the institute's name now, but there, um, is a, a group that's promoting form-based zoning, um, but I'm not aware of anybody who's done it locally.
Is it Strong Towns that prom, promotes those, form-based?
I believe they advocate for it, I don't think, I don't know that there's like a, a formal link.
Anybody from the floor like to make any comments, or feel free to come up and... Other than that, I'm glad to see you here.
Welcome, and thank you all for coming in.
Yep. Else? Do you have anything, Jim? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Uh, Chris, second by Bill, other discussion, if others in favor, second, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Close day. Next meeting's the 31st, March 31st.
On the 25th, I will probably, I will be remote, cause I'm, um, I may be at a, at a training conference. Comp plan meeting on the 25th.
Okay.
What did you, what date, what was the date?
Our meeting here is the 31st.
31st, yeah.
Last day of the month.
Thanks, sure.
Yeah, the reg, yeah, the regular, yes, the regular planning mission is 31st.
The comp is the 25th.
The comp is the 25th, and I think I'm going to be in Louisville.
Cool, I should, I was sitting here like, did I read that? Yeah, cause I'm a little hung up on like, um...